Okay, this is to go up, okay. All right, we're gonna call this meeting of the Landville City Council to order. I'm gonna ask the city clerk to give us a roll call, please. Madam Clerk.
Mayor Protem Osborne.
I'm here.
Councilmember Suarez.
Here.
Councilmember Kearney.
Present.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Mayor Pullen Miles.
Here, I'm gonna ask Councilwoman Suarez to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please stand.
And we're gonna ask Ms. Hoffman to give us a word of inspiration, if she will.
She's inspiring.
Ready, begin.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please keep standing.
Our Father in Heaven, we come to you tonight with joyful and gladness in our hearts. We're glad and grateful, Father, for these United States of America, that we can salute our flag, Father, and that we can have the privilege of speech and fair speech and to say what we need to say. We thank thee, Father, for our city council and their families. We would ask you would continue to give them wisdom and knowledge in what is best and right for our city. And, Father, we would never forget to pray for our government, our federal people who represent all of us in the lawmaking of these United States, and then continue to be with our people who protect us, Father, all the way from our local police force to our military over the seas. We would pray not only for them, Father, but we would pray for their families. We know their families miss them, but, Father, be of comfort to them, we pray, amen.
Amen, amen. Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. Okay, let's have our public safety report. Lieutenant.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report for February 19th through March 3rd. On February 23rd, approximately 9:00 PM, Deputy Kevin Walker was driving on Rosecrans Approaching Prairie when he observed a Nissan Altima dark tinted windows. He ran the plate, also revealed that the registration was expired. Deputy Walker conducted the traffic stop to cite the driver. Upon contacting the female driver, Deputy Walker saw an open bottle of alcohol in the rear seat with two plastic cups. He also smelled fresh marijuana. He detained the driver and the male occupant passenger pending an open alcohol container and marijuana investigation. While escorting the male back to the radio car, the male stated there was a firearm inside the vehicle. Deputy immediately found a load of firearm inside the vehicle plus the marijuana. Deputy Walker conducted an inquiry on the gun, and the gun revealed that it was stolen out of Nevada. While checking the passenger for any, or the male, for any warrants or wants, it was determined he was an ex-felon. Due to the above, the male was arrested for possession of a stolen firearm, ex-felon in possession of firearm, and possession of a firearm now registered to himself. The female was not, found not to be under the influence and released. Also, on February 27th, in the early morning hours, numerous South LA deputies, along with the assistance of our detectives assigned to trap. Traffic is our auto theft detectives, which stands for Task Force for Regional Auto Theft Prevention. They issued a search warrant in the 4600 block of 172nd Street regarding a possible chop shop for motorcycles. Prior during previous calls, Deputy Christopher Leonardi had observed numerous disassembled motorcycles, including hundreds of motorcycle parts in the backyard completely, the backyard was in complete disarray. In addition, he had assisted a previous victim whose motorcycle had been stolen where his onboard computer GPS tracked it to that same location. The station also had continuously received loud noise phone calls from the backyard of that location. So during that search warrant, they recovered a stolen bike, 14 stolen motorcycle engines, and numerous identifiable vehicle parts. One male was taken into custody for grand theft and operating a chop shop. Landville Code Enforcement and Animal Control were also notified, and they responded regarding unsafe building conditions and animals which were in need of medical attention. Due to this complex investigation, our trap unit took over the investigation, and they've already linked this person to other thefts within the area. Year to date, we still see a decline in our Part I crimes. As of today compared to last year, our aggravated assaults are down by 53%, our robberies are down by 20%, our burglaries are down by seven, and auto thefts are down by 20%. This concludes my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Is there any questions up there, Lieutenant?
I do.
I've done.
Lieutenant, you mentioned the stop for the tinted windows on a vehicle.
Yes, sir.
Is that, I've been told in the past, that's grounds enough just for a stop, right?
That is correct, that is a vehicle violation, and that is grounds for the stop.
Do the deputies actively stop tinted window vehicles?
They do, I mean, depending on the certain type of night, yes, they do. That is a legal way to stop someone, to see who's in the vehicle, especially late at night. That is a tool that we use, a violation of the vehicle code.
I thought so, I was curious just to confirm that again, because lately I haven't seen them everywhere.
Sure.
And sometimes you're going around the vehicle, and you wanna make sure you're making eye contact with somebody that they see you making a turn or whatever. You can't do it anymore.
Right.
They're all blacked out in these cars, and they're everywhere.
That is correct, everyone is putting their tinted windows for the most part right now, yeah.
So it's interesting to hear we're doing that, okay, thank you.
Lieutenant, I wanna thank you and your deputies for the wonderful work you guys do here in the city of Landville, and particularly for the crime stats, that we continue to be the beneficiary of reasonably low crime stats. And we know it's due to the hard work of yourself and the deputies, and I just wanna congratulate you guys, and thank you for all the hard work you guys put in to patrol them and keeping us safe here in the city of Landville. If you can convey that to your staff, we would appreciate it.
Of course, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, let's hear from items from the city clerk's department.
I just have two things. The first one is I wanted to remind the residents that from March 9th to March 17th is our annual cleanup, spring cleanup week, and so it's a good time to get rid of some of those bulky items that are around your place. And if you have any questions regarding picking up of your large items, either contact City Hall or check out our website. Also, one other quick reminder, because it has just hit me like a wall, is this coming Saturday to Sunday is time change already. We're three months already into this year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Okay, now we are at oral communications. Oral communications is when you have the opportunity to speak to this body being the Landville City Council on items that are not on the agenda. Mr. Kim, this will be you. If anyone would like to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda, we ask that you line up by the flag. When it becomes your turn, if you just come to the podium, if you begin with your name, in about three minutes, in about two minutes, the amber light will come on to give you the signal to start wrapping things up. So you can stop there. I'm gonna ask the other gentleman, if you can go onto this side by the flag, unless you guys are a party of two.
We're together.
A party of two, okay, so you can stay there with him, okay. Yes, sir, go ahead. Introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Michael Kim, I'm on 171st Street, 4627 is the home address.
My name is Ed Abud, and I'm at 4629 West 171st.
Okay.
The reason for our visit is concerning a hedge in our front yard, and we have been in contact with Councilmember Bernadette Suarez regarding our hedge. That hedge in our yard has been there since the 80s. And prior to getting notification, we actually had a fence there which actually decayed and crumbled away. And I believe having a fence there that was within the regulation would allow a hedge to grow to a certain height. But the reason we're here is because we're next to the railroad train tracks, and that fence has been used as an easement by homeless personnel and people who happen to just walk along the train tracks, and also residents. In the one year that we've lived at this address, that fence has been in a solid state for about a month. So it's been, as soon as it's been fixed, it's been torn down, and Ed has had mail taken from him, and they also washed his check that he had for, to pay a utility bill, and he had a bad experience where they took, I don't know how much, but...
Yeah, the traffic, the traffic from the railroad tracks down there is unfortunate. And Mike and his wife have three toddlers. And this hedge gives them a little bit of security that they can actually play out here in their own yard. The hedge isn't bothering anybody. As a matter of fact, the hedge is about 90% of a green area that I take care of that's at the end of 171st. It doesn't impact the street, there is no walkway there. And one of the concerns from the code enforcement was pedestrian traffic. Well, there is no, should be no pedestrian traffic there. That is not a right of way for pedestrians. We cut the hedge on the east side down, so people who are walking on the sidewalk could actually see cars coming out of the driveway. But this hedge on the west side impacts no one. It does not impact the street, there's no traffic, nobody can go anyplace. But we gotta do something to protect these kids. Now, we can't have the sheriff, I can't call the sheriff every time I see some knucklehead coming down the tracks, and every morning I'm out there cleaning up glass or bottles or something. And that fence is horrible, it looks like we live in a ghetto there. Now, the last time they passed it is all they did was patch it. They took a piece of fence and just hooked it to where there was a hole in it. Now, the whole right side on the north side, on the northwest side, is completely down. You can just step over it.
Okay.
Yes, sir, is that it, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll provide some comments after everyone had an opportunity to speak. Thank you, sirs. Yes, sir. Mr. London.
So, I'm Nastia Darwi, Michael's wife, I'm sorry. That's the reason why all this is, we're trying to get an exemption for our edges. It's giving me a lot of anxiety, seriously, already because we're close to the railroad. Just that wall is close to the railroad, but now, if we do cut that edges to 30 inches, my son, my little one, is like almost 36 inches. He can actually jump over, people can come over. This is technically our side yard, this is where they play. There's no front door right there, it's just, it takes us to our kitchen. So if anybody, if we do cut it, there's no privacy, no security. I know, as I can hear, Landville is getting, is safe, you know, because, thanks to the sheriff, but you never know, things happen every day, and I don't want that to happen to my kids. And it's giving me a lot of anxiety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hello, Johnny London, 171st Street. With the sheriffs and Mr. Osborne, why is it legal for the tent shops in the city of Landville to tent drivers and passenger windows? And that, can we not, is there some kind of ordinance that we could say that you guys could tent all the windows you want except for drivers, front windshield, just in case if they're crazy, and passengers? And that do something legally to stop the tenters in the city of Landville, and hopefully that'll catch on to other cities? And that just make it illegal for the business to tent those windows? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll close public comment. It seems as if that's all those who would like to speak tonight, so we'll close public comment and bring up the diocese for any comments from the council. Let's start with Councilmember Reed.
Alrighty, not much tonight, so I'll just select one. In regards to that hedge, obviously, we've got an issue with code and whatnot, so we'll need to have that looked at, but I definitely wanna look at the fence. We've had other issues along the fence where it's getting cut and dealt with with other things, so we probably need a serious look all along the right of way there at our fencing, so. I do wanna thank everybody that spoke tonight.
Pat Kearney. I wanna ask a question to City Manager, or Michael. On this hedge, it's on Caltrans property, or it's a butt Caltrans?
The hedge is on private property. And it falls under our municipal code, which is also the same as the county code, which allows for up to 30 inches of solid hedge or fencing, block wall, et cetera, in the front yard setback. I realize that apparently this hedge is not in their front, it's not where their front door is, but it is in the front yard setback of the property that is on 171st Street. Anything over 30 inches up to 40 can be see-through, and we've dealt with this in the past. So that is in the municipal code. We cannot provide exemptions, the staff nor council, we'd have to change the code and also look at the liability issues with that. But that is the situation there. In terms of the Caltrans or the Metro fencing, you know, as you know, there's fencing on the east side of the Metro right of way, but on the west side it's wide open, and yes, it does get damaged, and our crew goes out there every time they can, and they do try to patch the Metro right of way fencing, you know, but that is the situation right now.
So, what you're saying is, to safeguard this young family, the three children, we're gonna stick by the code and have them cut down to 30 inches?
Right now, we have to, because in the terms of the code, if, the rare exception, someone's backing out and hits someone, and we've made an exception.
But at butts, at butts the railroad tracks, there's nobody gonna back in.
It faces 171st Street. The driveway and the hedge is on the cul-de-sac.
Okay, but what's to the west of it? The railroad tracks, correct?
To the west of the property, I believe.
It's the railroad track.
Is the Metro.
So who's gonna back out of the railroad tracks?
Anyone walking along, I mean, I'll defer to the city attorney, but that is the situation, that is our code, and again, it's what the county requires also.
I disagree with that one, and the tent shop, but we should look into that too. Is that fall under? Michael? Because I know there's a lot of cars, like Jim said, driving with all the windows tinted, except for the windshield, the rest of them all tinted. And with that, I'll pass it along to my colleague, Tim.
Councilwoman Suarez.
Thank you, thank you to everybody that came out tonight. Mr. Boob, we have been in contact regarding the hedge. So I did send it to our staff to take a look at it. We also really do hope that you can also talk to our sheriffs, but if you can be in contact with them, I, there was a little bit of miscommunication, so I wasn't sure if you had already brought this attention to staff, and so I'll refer to our city manager, but that's kind of where we were in the midst of it. I wasn't quite sure on what was going on there. So it sounds like you've already been in contact with them, and I think that's where we're at right now, so. And one question I have is, is there any way to put pressure on Metro to kind of secure those gates? I mean, it's not gonna do much use if it just keeps getting broken into.
We can continue to request to them to maintain the fence, in lieu of that, because we do go out there and then try to patch it when they're not out there. In terms of the hedge, I believe it has made its way to code enforcement and also planning to talk to them, I believe.
I believe it's, code is working on looking at it, and as the city manager mentioned, our code is very specific. As the council is well aware, there was many months of working on that front yard fencing. You have a combination of the solid versus the open area, and I wasn't here at that time, but it's a very lengthy section of our code for front yard fencing, and includes hedging hedges as well as other items from obstruction. And I think some of the comments that have been coming out, Councilman Kearney's mentioned, is the clear sight issue, we could look at that as well, but overall, just in general, not knowing the specifics on this site, you have to meet our minimum solid versus an open area of the fencing requirements. And we could definitely look at that, and I can work with Michael and check in that, see if there's any exceptions, not saying there would be in this case, but I would definitely work the city manager and code enforcement to see what kind of remedies may be possible.
Okay.
Yeah, and a clarifying point on that, if we've got 30 inch solid, and then stack on top of that the 50% visibility to give a higher piece that would fit, we need to make sure that, whether the code allows that or not.
Yeah, we would love it. I've heard some comments about clear sight, we just need to look at it and look at the front yard, we can look at, as I mentioned, the code is very lengthy. When it was written and council adopted it, it went with a lot of input from the community and what you guys wanted to see on that, and as well as the hedging part. Because some people, you know, they put the hedging in on the lower end, and they put the fencing on the top, or you'll see vice versa. And over the years, the hedging has grown taller. This is not unusual, as the city managers mentioned, we have this happen quite a bit, but we'll definitely look at it and see if there's any remedies or suggestions we could come up with.
Thank you, I'll pass it along.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Osborne. I say leave them alone, or change the code. I mean, this is crazy. When all these things were adopted years ago, we didn't have the problems that we're seeing today with transients and drug addicts and beer bottles and all this stuff. I live on a major street, and I deal with it every day. And it's getting worse, and we all see it. There's more, I've had bums asleep in my yard sometimes, I mean, I get sick of it. So I say leave them alone, or let, I haven't seen this address, I'm gonna come out and take a look at it. And then Johnny, every now and then you hit the nail on the head. And so, that's something that I think should be looked at. We have all these tent shops, and if they're doing a process to vehicles that is creating the problem that I see firsthand, what can we do? Can't code talk to those businesses and say, is this an illegal service? Or, you know, they're creating an illegal situation by doing that? That's a very good idea.
about what windows can be tinned in.
Well, we heard from the lieutenant who said it is.
Right, so that we, we can't put anything in our code about it, but we can definitely remind people.
Well, I, I just think it should be notified. If you want to come to the podium, please do, yeah. If it should be spoken to the businesses that are providing something that creates an illegality issue for the LASD, I think we should be contacting those businesses.
There, there is a legitimate reason to tent your windows. You could have a doctor's prescription.
That's true, and you can do your back windows.
But for the most cases, when we deal with, with tent shops, professional tent shops, they usually have a waiver stating, hey, you know.
Don't hold us liable.
Don't hold us liable.
But they know they're doing it against county law or whatever. Yeah. Yeah. Well, I think we should be a little forward on that. Anyway, that's all I got.
Okay, yeah, I'm also with you on the, the hedge issues. My question would be whether or not it would qualify for variance. A variance would allow you to vary from the code when you have an unusual, usual case where you are not able to enjoy your, your property in the same manner as other properties in the same, situated at the same would, would allow. And you talk about the privacy or, or safety. Hedges are a way of having privacy and, and safety. And if, I don't know if, when you look at a variance issue, if you take into account privacy or, or safety in, in terms of whether or not you qualify for a variance. But I would be interested to, to see if there's some kind of creative way that we could make this happen, because that, that, that is a concern in, in that area. And no matter how many times you put a lock on that fence, long as it's a fence, it's gonna, people are gonna use clippers, and they're gonna clip the lock to go through so they can cross the tracks rather than go, go around. So, I mean, you can put a lock on there every day, a new one on it every day, or patch it up every day, the next day.
Can I ask you?
You can guarantee that.
Can I ask a question with Voltes? Did we hear, did, did the fence belong to the railroad right away or to the city?
The railroad is Metro.
Railroad owns the fence. Metro owns the fence.
It's on Metro right away. The, the chain link fence that lines the east side of the Metro.
We do repairs on it.
We go out there because Metro will not get out there for a long time, yeah. So, we do patches to try to secure it, yes.
One more complaint we'd have against Metro.
Right, just as a service to our residents, we take it upon ourselves to repair the, when the wall is, is breached, and not just in that section, it's, it's a few sections that, that's breached. We go out and repair it, put a lock on it, and people just cut it the next day.
Here's a question I'd ask of staff. If we could look to a future budget to replace the whole thing, can we find whatever funding to possibly do that at some point in the future?
Sir, look at that.
Explore it.
The question is, replace with what?
We wouldn't replace it with a, with another.
Who knows?
With another fence.
Metro approval, but we could look at that and talk to Metro.
I'd like to see some proposals.
Maybe Metro would be looking at some alternatives, possibly.
Yeah. I think outside the.
Right, it's their liability.
Yeah, that's something we would definitely have to look at, because we may be also assuming the liability. But it's worth looking into. If, obviously, if Metro allows, because it's Metro's fence as well as Metro's property. And Metro's being, you know, a big government agency does not take kindly for other agencies trading on their territory. But we definitely will, will work with them on it. The, the tinning, the window tinning, thank you, Mr. London, for that. That's something I hadn't thought about. I didn't know people tent, people tent the front windows?
Yeah.
Okay, I've never, windshield, okay, I've never seen that, okay. But, but definitely the, 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 the back and the, the side windows. I've seen a lot of, a lot of cases where these are pitch black. And I already knew they're against the vehicle code, but for some reason, people still do it or what have you. But yeah, if we can compel our, our business folks not to provide that service, that's pretty much what we're, we're asking them to do, not to provide that service, then that would be great. Okay, with that, I think that's all there was. We've already answered the rest of, I think that was pretty much it. Okay, okay, we'll close public comments and comments from council members, and we will move our agenda. Next item on our calendar is the consent calendar. What is the pleasure of this body concerning the consent calendar? Um, um, yeah, this item is closed. We're going to the next item. Thank you for coming. Thank you. Okay, what is the pleasure of this body concerning the consent calendar?
Somebody make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept consent calendar as written.
I'll second it.
Okay, the motion's been made by Kearney that we accept the consent calendar and seconded by, who was the loudest?
With a tie. Alberta did.
Okay, we give this one to Reed.
Okay.
Okay, is there any discussion on the consent calendar?
Nope.
Another question. Council, please.
Did mine go through? It didn't go through?
Guess what, budget is. Here's that one contact.
Motion approved unanimously.
Okay. We, we blamed it on the equipment.
There's a hole in it.
Okay, we're now on item number four under administration. Who's gonna give the staff report?
Mr. Mayor, I am.
Yes, sir.
All right, miss, this item before the council is an approval to a citywide salary and pay resolution and benefit resolution for the central management team. These are the directors of the city. As you know, we are in negotiations with all the employees at this time. All the MOUs from last year were for a one-year term, and we will shortly be going in negotiations with our general employees. This resolution night only pertains to the managers, the directors, it does not affect my position or the general employees. We have been in the process of recruiting for department heads, and we have found in these recruitments that our department heads are below market in terms of compensation in other cities. We're having difficulties attracting applicants to our positions. Citywide, the last time the cities, the city employees have received a COLA was about seven years ago. There was an interim COLA, but that was a complete offset to this employees paying their per contribution, so the net result was no cost, no increase in salary. We recently recruited for Public Works Director probably about nine months ago. We had two applicants, and the gentleman we were making an offer to was making more as an assistant director elsewhere, and therefore, we are back out again recruiting for a Public Works Director. We recently went through the process for a finance director. We had three very strong finalists, and all three are assistant directors where they work now, and all three make way more than our director pays in Londale. We did find one applicant who, it was a close call, and luckily, this is our strong candidate, and this person was willing to accept the position. She, she will be taking a pay reduction. She's not coming because of this resolution tonight, but in the future, it could impact our directors and other employees staying. So, the item before you tonight will provide a five percent COLA to all of our department, department heads. That will not bring them completely up to market based on our surrounding cities, but it will assist us as we look at bringing in openings right now. Again, we do have a finance director who's been, has accepted. She'll be starting next Monday, and I'll give you some information later on that. We have reopened Public Works Director, and to date, we've only had, I think, what, two applications, I believe. We're holding this open till the end of March, longer than we normally would. And we're gonna be, if approved night, we're gonna be reflying that, that advertisement with the five percent increase. We hope it will help. I didn't want to go much higher at this time without further review, but the five percent is appropriate. I would recommend that to the council. And that is what's before you tonight, is that approval for the resolution. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer that.
Thank you for that report. Are there any questions of the staff report?
No questions.
Okay, seeing now, what is the pleasure of this body concerning item number four?
Motion to call the staff recommendation. Would you like me to read it in entirety? Or you want me to?
Please, please don't.
Please don't?
Yeah. Not in entirety.
Staff recommendation.
And I'll, I'll second it. Can I second it?
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion, motion's been made by Kearney and seconded by Pullman Miles that we accept the staff report. Is that?
For the city attorney to read?
None to read, okay.
I just want to say that I, I concur with it, and I think, you know, we've had our own discussions with the city manager in understanding the problem. You want to get good people, you gotta pay for it, so I think it's appropriate.
Okay, without any further discussion, would the council please vote on item number four?
Motion approved unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, item number five, we're gonna remove from the agenda tonight.
Yes, I'll just clarify, we won't be bringing that back. We learned that the, the grant that we were pursuing for the gardens is in conflict with the deed that we have with the Caltrans when we purchased the property back in the eighties, so we won't be bringing this back.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, item number six. Award a contract for a traffic signal.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, this is a request to fund a, a consultant to do a traffic signal inventory of our, all of our lights in our city. We have approximately thirty-three signals, but we need to get a full assessment of the type of signals that are out there, what they are today in terms of the remaining life on the bulbs and so on. By doing this, we'll be able to pursue some grant funding for replacement of our lights throughout the city. They have been in place for many years, and we're looking to go to LED lights and also looking to pursue grants to help fund the improvements. So, with that, we need to do this inventory to have something in place. We solicited bids from several companies, and the low bid was KOA construct, consultants. And for disclosure, I want to make note that our interim Public Works Director, Kohono Oi, is a employee of KOA Consultants. He did not work on this bid. He had our engineering staff work on it. He did review the staff report, as he should as interim director, but he did not work on the solicitation of bids. He also did, does not have any financial gain through his company if we select this company to do the product. Based on the review of the companies, I have full faith that KOA will do a very good job for us, and they were the low bid. The estimated cost with the contingency is twenty-two thousand, two hundred dollars, and this would all be funded through Measure M funds, and no general funds would be used. So, the request to council is to approve the use of Measure M funds and to award a contract to KOA Consultants.
Okay, thank you for that report. No general funds? Let's, let's have a question from Mr. Osborne.
Steve, is every, you know offhand, has every potential left turn signal been upgraded to a left turn signal in the city?
No.
I didn't think so.
And that's gonna be part of it.
Do you know how many that entails?
I don't have that count, Councilmember Osborne. I do know that we are looking at the entire boulevard, we're actually looking at all the, the main thoroughfares. Englewood Avenue, Hawthorne Boulevard, Manhattan Beach Boulevard. So, this will allow us to assess that and also assess the type of signals that are in place at each intersection. And the next item, we'll address some of, a couple of other intersections, but that will be part of it, and that is a very good point.
That's what I want to be sure on.
Because we're looking at traffic flow, and also looking at new battery backups for all the signals, so that we have less calls on the county.
Okay. Good, good.
Okay. Any further questions?
No questions. I'll make a motion to go with staff recommendation.
Okay, motion's been made by Mr. Councilmember Daniel Reed.
I'll second it.
And seconded by Councilwoman Osborne. Is there any discussion?
Bernie, have her show on.
Any, any questions, or any more discussion on the motion?
No.
Here and now, the council, please vote.
Motion approved unanimously.
Thank you, madam. Next item on our agenda, item number eight. Items from the mayor and councilmembers. Anything you'd like to share about your attendance and any meals you may have?
I want the therapy. Have you seen, we haven't, we haven't included that in a while. Any meal, sir?
It's been a day or two, hasn't it? Yeah, I did attend Contract Cities last week. We have some legislative updates going on there, where we've heard that the government, the governor has a couple of new plans on taking away some more local control. So, as more information comes out on that to bring attention to everyone, I will bring that back.
Thank you.
So, we had a very nice meeting over at the Porsche Center. I went early and got a ride along. That was kind of nice. Zero to ninety in three seconds does exist. And then, of course, I attended Charmaine Doty's unveiling this evening. That was wonderful. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Pat Kearney?
The city manager and I, the city manager and I attended the lobby trust for the LA County Sheriffs. Also, I attended the unveiling of Charmaine Doty's Wall of Distinction plaque, and I want to wish everybody a happy Saint Patrick's Day on the seventeenth.
Okay, great. Councilwoman Suarez, thank you.
I attended the beginning of the South Bay Council Cities of, or Council of, the General Assembly for the Council of Governments for the South Bay. Our very own Mayor Protem was a moderator. It was a bunch of historians, so it was really good.
Too young to have these problems.
No, so I just attended the beginning of it. Unfortunately, I had to go to work. And in addition, I did also attend Charmaine Doty's unveiling for the Wall of Distinction, which was beautifully done, and we're very grateful to have had her. And with that, I'll pass it along.
Osborne. She's too young to have those senior moments. That's for me. No, we all attended Charmaine, and thanks to staff for putting that on. That was.
million, but that was without the addition of 153rd, from 153rd to Marine. And I had a council member ask me that this morning. It was a very good question. So based on the additional work and the old bid, we did not see a need to go out again and pay for another engineer's estimate. We felt this was in line with the bids we received. The high bid was almost $2 million. The low bid was Excel Paving, who we've used before, and they have a very good reputation, and their bid is at one point, basically $1.6 million. So with that, the recommendation of the council is to adopt the plans and specifications for Phase Three of Inglewood Avenue, to award a construction contract of $1.6 million to Excel Paving, and approve a contingency of $240,000. At this time, we expect to go out to bid by the end of this month, if not the beginning of April at the latest. So this is going to move along very quickly, and we'll be seeing some really good improvements on Inglewood Avenue. And that's my report. If you have any questions.
Okay, thank you for your report. I look forward.
Too bad Larry didn't live to see it.
Yes, I look forward to this project getting underway. It's been several planning, not planning, what did you call them earlier? Yeah, directors of public works, in the works, and.
It's a long time coming.
Couple of council members in the works.
Can I ask Steve a question?
We'll see the other phases moving along also, but this is going to be a priority.
When you and I were talking about this, I asked for some info on another arterial that, anything you can share on Redonda Beach Boulevard? Because you and I talked about that. You might want to let the public know that that's kind of in the works.
That's a major issue for us, too. From Prairie up to Hawthorne Boulevard, Redonda Beach Boulevard, if anyone drives that, you know there's issues with the concrete, the asphalt. A couple of years ago, we went out and we used some material to fill in all the cracks and so on. It has about a five-year lifespan, possibly longer. That road improvement is in the works, because we are working through the cog and Measure M fund, Measure R funding for the region. We're also partnering with the City of Torrance for their Measure R funding to get that rehabbed. And also, we tied that road improvement into the Galleria funding that we're getting from the developer, the $2 million there. So it's all connected, so that we are not using all of the city money, but we're using available grant funds and working with our neighboring jurisdictions. So we're thinking within the next year and a half or so, we'll get that going. In the meantime, we are watching the street and keeping the cracks patched, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, it is in the works.
Very good. What, okay, is there any additional questions? What is the pleasure of this body concerning item number seven?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Osborne and seconded by Kearney. Is there any discussion on item number seven on the motion? Seeing now, with the council, please vote. Thank you, madam. Next item on our agenda, item number eight, items from the mayor and council members. Anything you'd like to share about your attendance and any meals you may have ever seen?
It's been a dare to, hasn't it? Yeah, I did attend Contract Cities last week. We have some legislative updates going on there, where we've heard that the government, the governor has a couple of new plans on taking away some more local control.
Yep.
So as more information comes out on that to bring attention to everyone, I will bring that back.
Thank you.
So we had a very nice meeting over at the Porsche Center. I went early and got a ride along. That was kind of nice. Zero to 90 in three seconds does exist. And then, of course, I attended Charmaine Doty's unveiling this evening. That was wonderful. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Pat Kearney?
The city manager and I, the city manager and I attended the lobby trust for the L.A. County sheriffs. Also, I attended the unveiling of Charmaine Doty's Wall of Distinction plaque. And I want to wish everybody a happy St. Patrick's Day on the 17th.
Okay, great. Council, I'm sorry, thank you.
I attended the beginning of the South Bay Council Cities of, Council of, the General Assembly for the Council of Governments for the South Bay. Our very own mayor, Protem, was a moderator.
Moderator.
It was a bunch of historians, so it was really good.
Too young to have these problems.
No, so I just attended the beginning of it. Unfortunately, I had to go to work. And in addition, I did also attend Charmaine Doty's unveiling for the Wall of Distinction, which was beautifully done, and we're very grateful to have had her. And with that, I'll pass it along.
Osborne.
She's too young to have those senior moments. That's for me. No, we all attended Charmaine, and thanks to staff for putting that on. That was, that was nice. And finally, people were there, because we did it before, and we didn't have any attendees in the past. It was nice for the family to see that, for all time's sake, so. And then, Prunidant mentioned I moderated a panel discussion for the General Assembly last week. It was regional topics as they relate in historical context to the South Bay in general. It was the city manager of Torrance, past mayor of Manhattan, and a Northrop historian, and a Palisverdes librarian, among others. And followed shortly thereafter by Dr. Patrick, I probably won't say it right, Sun, who is the, also the owner of L.A. Times, partial owner of the Lakers, et cetera, et cetera. He gave a very interesting talk on his cancer research, work that he's done for years, and future technologies involving zinc air batteries and so forth. Quite interesting. And he's looking to acquire more property in the South Bay. He's, just to know, he's listed, I think, 47th on Forbes list of billionaires in the country, so we got somebody rich in the backyard here, so. Anyway, that's all I've got.
Thank you. And you can definitely tell he was a billionaire, because everyone wanted to shake his hand and wanted to get pictures and, you know, whatever they could.
Including you.
Well, including me, but, you know, hey, I'm just doing my job.
That's right.
But yeah, it was, it actually was a great General Assembly. It was probably one of the, from my perspective, one of the more interesting ones than we've had in a while.
Most attended they ever had. That was the 20th anniversary.
Well-attended. You know, so it was a good job from the staff over at South Bay, on cog, and all the moderators and everyone.
And thanks to staff for bringing their display that they, I forgot to mention.
And thank for the staff for bringing their display. This is just the end. Actually, they brought the display for the historical society, some vintage photos of Longdale. So that was, that was great.
And also for cable, for filming.
And also for cable, for, yeah.
Yeah. Tom and the crew, they did a good job.
Yeah, Tom and the crew for filming, and who else should we acknowledge?
Probably somebody we're forgetting.
Just kidding. They're about one did a great job. I also attended the Wall of Distinction honoring the main Charmaine Doty, and I also attended the sanitation district monthly meeting. There's nothing really to report there. Our negotiations are ongoing with our employee union, so hopefully we'll have a contract with them pretty soon on that end. But other than that, I think that's all I have to report. Okay, with that, we do have a closed session, which is the last item on our agenda. It's a conference with legal counsel, and I'm going to ask the city attorney to give us a provision of the closed session.
The city council will meet in closed session on one item to discuss whether to initiate litigation in one case. Thank you.
Okay, we're standing recess for closed session.
unanimously authorize the initiation of receivership proceedings against the owners of 14316 Kingsdale Avenue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that report. Okay, the next regular scheduled meeting of the Longdale City Council will be held at 6:30 p.m. on Monday, March 18th, that's 18th, right? At the Longdale City Council Hall Chambers. With that, it is 7:31, and we are adjourned, only one minute behind.